Thank him without getting across. So that's kind of where we're at. So.
Our newest council member will be sworn in, Donald Panzer. And he was the lead vote getter in the 2023 city council election. He has served before. I don't know what years. We're going to find all that out. And we look forward to having him. And I'm really interested to see, I'm going to ask him, you know, in a year, you know, what do you think? You know, how do you compare your service before to your service now? I think that's going to be very valuable. But I think it's going to take him a year just to kind of absorb everything we do up here and to to see how much the city's changed and the dynamics have changed and then make that make that judgment. So with that said, let's go ahead and square it on it. With no further ado, as our newest council member, you've got mail waiting for you.
Okay, you do.
Get in front of everyone.
Can I use your camera?
What? Yeah. So Amy's got it.
All right, cool. Thanks, chief.
Okay. There's your right hand. Let's do that for me. What? I, Donald Panzer.
I, Donald Panzer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
And faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
For Ellsworth, Kansas.
For Ellsworth, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, you do. You got all kinds of good.
So.
Don, we, we will get your attention. We are working on your name for it.
That's the same chair I had twelve years ago.
Yeah, we may move around.
Um, but yeah, we could be probably. A good time. All right, with that said, Melissa, are you on the, are you on the, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Correct me if I'm wrong. So we're going to go ahead and elect a council, city council president. Being that Wayne was the council president and he was, he is no longer now officially serving for the city of Ellsworth. We're going to, we're going to elect a new council president. So here's how it works. I had to ask her because it's kind of not been a thing before. We, I asked for nominations. You, you can nominate yourself. And after we have a nomination, somebody will say, I nominate myself or I nominate Tyler or whatever. We get a second, all right? After we get the second, we do a full vote. So even though you nominated yourself, you probably should vote for yourself. You can, you should vote for yourself. I will not be voted. But being, is Darcy on the, she's there?
Everybody's here.
All right, good. So we have five people that will vote. If that vote doesn't carry, then we look for a second nomination and we, we do the same thing again. So did I say anything wrong, Melissa, or did I summarize it correctly?
Nope, that sounds right.
Okay, so I'll ask for nominations and someone says, I want to do it, or Tyler, or whatever. And then we say, did we get a second? Second, we do a full vote. And if it doesn't carry, then we can do it again.
Has it, Tyler been on the office?
You asked.
No, but I mean.
I don't want.
Here we go. All right, so is everybody ready? Do I have a nomination for council president?
I nominate Tyler.
Okay.
I nominate Donald Panzer.
All right, do we have a second for Tyler and Art?
I nominate Jessica Coats.
All right, Melissa, this is why we had the conversation. This is why we had the conversation. So I think we have to vote for Tyler, correct, Melissa?
No, there's no seconds for anybody. You need a second for somebody.
Okay, a second. So Jessica, Darcy has nominated.
Tyler, Jessica, and Dawn have been nominated. Does somebody want a second one of those?
He's second.
I'll give him second. Jessica votes.
All right, Jessica Coats has been nominated and seconded. So now we're going to vote. So we're going to do a roll call vote. Jessica, who are you voting for for council president?
I will vote for myself.
Okay. Breathing a sigh of relief there. Darcy, who are you voting for for council president?
I second Jessica Coats for council president.
All right, Tyler, who are you voting for for council president?
I vote for Jessica.
Tyler votes for Jessica. Don, who are you voting for for council president?
Jessica.
Voting for Jessica Coats. Aaron, who are you voting for for council president?
Jessica.
All right, so it's five votes. There are no non-votes. So Jessica Coats will be elected as the new council president. So let's get her a round of applause.
Thank you, guys.
What's your question on the independent reporter? Here we go. We need a history of all the women's council presidents that have served before in the city of Ellsworth. We'd like to have a list. And it'd be great if you could do a story on this because I think it's a big deal. We have had one woman mayor before, the 1930s, I believe. And we've not had one since, but this could be the first time we've had a council president as a woman. I, I don't know. But I'm, I hope the independent reporter can do that and maybe they'll do a story on it. I think it's a big deal. So congratulations, Jessica, well deserved. All right, next portion of our meeting will be petitions and delegations. This is a moment where the public can come forward and have five minutes to discuss any subject that they'd like. For all comments, please keep your, please state your full name and whether you are an Ellsworth city resident. All comments are limited to five minutes per subject unless city council has further questions. Would anybody like to approach the podium and discuss something? All right. Should we? Uh, you're, I think you've got a whole agenda, Joe. So I think you're good there. You don't need to come up here because you'd be cut off five minutes. All right, so we move on to the unfinished business portion of our meeting. We've got to go ahead and pass a resolution to reschedule the TIP district public hearing. That's resolution 2024 dash zero two.
That only happened when you get there.
No.
Oh, hospital. Have to have some of that.
No, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
My intention.
Or just reschedule Monday.
To.
To February. But you can just approve resolution twenty.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve resolution two zero two four dash oh two.
I'll second.
Council Bernard has that basically made a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero two. Councilor Coats has seconded that motion. Any discussion, concerns? All right, hearing analysts, favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next item on our agenda in the unfinished business section is the Kirkland Michael update. John, you want to clear the podium?
Good evening, council. Mayor, city administrator. Getting kind of a short list. We completed a lot of projects this past year, so I was getting ready for it. Almost finished another one. The quick update for tonight is the number one neighborhood multi-use path. Obviously, with this weather, it's not going to be a whole lot happen for the short term. But all the concrete has been placed for the path. The remaining items to finish the work is to do the finished dirt work and to place the grass seed and the road control. You're probably all aware that during the placement of the final concrete there at the north end by the bridge, the concrete, or a concrete truck were back across the soccer field and did some damage there running. I was told that the contractor is working with the city to come up with a resolution to get the grass restored there on the soccer field. Sorry that that'll happen, but it will get addressed. Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Um, and what's the status on the drainage between the neighborhood and the salmon?
As far as the, where the ditch comes through?
Yeah.
So there's a spot where the path was designed to basically follow the contour of the drainage ditch from the west. We had our surveyors come in and survey that. We're processing the survey and I was just going to talk to you about it.
Okay.
Be Wednesday.
Thank you.
So we'll come up with, if there's desire, changes to the path. But if you've been there recently, there's water backing up to a certain degree to the west of the path in that low spot. The dirt work there is high currently, so once the final dirt work is done, that'll change things. But it was designed so that the water in that shallow channel would flow over the path into the highway right in the ditch. After the first great events, the water dipped on there. I think it soaked up in about two days. So we're discussing if that's going to be acceptable. We should hopefully want to, maybe erase the path and provide some sort of drainage piping or something. Dustin, I actually have a meeting Wednesday, so I was going to discuss that with him for detail in a second. So I doubt anything will happen after this week just because things are so saturated right now. Hate to see what happened. I've been a equipment shoveling project currently. Moving on, the next subject is the Sea Clip Project Resurface K fourteen. The contractor initially thought they might want to try to start in the winter months with the concrete work. They decided to back off that and we haven't heard anything new at this point, but currently the latest start date is July eighth. So once we hear anything about when they want to start, we'll certainly let the city council know on that. And then the final item that I have on my list is the sanitary sewer study. And that's going to be part of the meeting on Wednesday to discuss how to get that moving in forward trajectories. We can get that design finalized and approved by K H E.
John, what's the timeframe for the Sea Clip on main? Like how, what's the length of the time?
I believe the number of working days were fifty, if I remember right. I need to, I could add that to my notes here.
I just didn't know if we would run into any issues with any more possible county plans.
Yeah, that's something key to mind, you know? And the other thing, I'm glad you mentioned that, Aaron. I think that they are looking at maybe bringing it up third. It probably will not come down, Doug, as the parade wall. A lot of the activity will be over at Priest Park, so it's very possible we can work around that.
Okay. Do they have a date established for?
I think it's that first weekend in August.
First weekend in August.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I have a question also. Are they going to re-mill with the existing asphalt there or are they going to overlay it?
They will mill off about two inches and then put back up two inches.
Okay, because I was, theory, in theory, I was wondering if they add any inch, two inches, that's also going to make the flood control worse, wouldn't it? So since they are going to mill it off and then come back, it shouldn't change the flood plain at all.
Correct.
Okay.
And also the road is pretty steep. They cram from center to edge anyway.
I just want to make sure we were.
Exactly. Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
All that was considered.
And Fourth Street, they're also redoing that intersection to try to help flow along there too. So we're working on getting advancements. We procured two of them, I guess, need to get ordered on there.
And then the other item was that when we redid Main Street originally, but all the new sidewalks, everything in downtown, we spent a lot of time selecting the angles for the parking downtown, the correct angle. So we'd get as many cars on there as we could without everyone bagging car doors. I like to have a map or diagram of those angles so we can put them back exactly the way they are.
That's actually already in the construction. Basically putting back to a new garden.
Yeah, it's, it works perfect the way it is now.
Does seem to work fine.
Yeah, before when we had a straighter, everyone's cars was getting dented, but it actually made Main Street narrower because the cars were stuck out. Yeah, so this is a good deal.
Yep. Already got that, got them in the plans.
Okay, good question.
So I'm doing, I guess, the final item. I don't know where we're at in the library. Dustin, if you have urban name recently about their.
The parking lot, we submitted the plans and they were searching for brands.
That's the last that's happened.
Nothing really for Kirkland Michael to do at this point or. That's, that's it for me. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. If not, I've got twelve miles to get home, but they hit the road.
Where did they arch to? Would be like some kind of railing for that box or a thing for that path?
Yes.
Something there?
Yes.
We, we've been in touch with KDOT and we've, we're, we're using plans from another project that matches the project here. We're going to do.
With the design, and I'll say, Tyler, since you asked that question, because of the flatness of the slope and the distance away from the path, the criteria doesn't require any railing there.
Yeah.
But it would be a, an addition, I guess you could say, or added safety benefit.
Yeah.
So KDOT did actually look at that specifically in their design and said it wasn't needed.
Why wasn't put in the first place?
Any other questions for John? All right, thank you, John. Thank you, John. Safe travels.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, so the next item up for the new business is the approval of the 2024 gap waiver, resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero one gap waiver for 2024.
This is just something we approve every year so that we can, we generally accept it all.
Any questions about this? No.
I say, John.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the gap waiver, resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero one.
I'll second.
You want to give it to?
I got you.
Okay. You got it, Don?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so Councilor Coats has made a motion to approve the 2024 gap waiver. Councilor Panzer has seconded that motion. Any discussion, concerns? All right, hearing analysts, favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. The gap waiver has been approved. All right, really, the only item up on our agenda that really is going to require any thought of this next one is the regulations and enforcement of junk yards and salvage yards. We've got it on as an ordinance. And as we've kind of positioned Delvin and Steve into the code division, you know, we're running into more and more times where we're starting to enforce things that have been on the books for a variety of reasons. They just haven't been enforced. And we're starting to do that. So we've, we've aligned ourselves to start doing that. And, and you know, with that, there's, there are going to be some things that come along that may require some adjustments, so on and so forth. But I think the overriding concern that I wanted to bring the council's attention is that we, we can't have a discussion every time somebody gets cited for something. It deteriorates Dustin's authority. It, it lessens Delvin's authority and it kind of weakens, you know, when they come to knock on somebody's door and say, hey, you know, here's the ordinance. We need you to do X, Y, and Z. They just kind of need to do X, Y, and Z. You know, we can't create an agenda item each and every time. But this one's a little bit different, a little more complex. And if I said it correctly without saying it too, too much in depth, and I'm going to kind of let everybody talk here in a minute. So I think what I'll do next is I'm going to have Dustin fill in some of the gaps. Then we're going to have Joe come forward and then the council can just ask questions. Sound good to you, Joe? Yeah, so Dustin, fill in any other details you want to.
Joe's approached the city because he purchased the property out by the public works area. And we've been walking him through various steps. Some of the steps he had to go through is due to us not managing our land use either. Like there was a road that ran through his property that he waited on us to finish our part. There was a couple of missteps in terms of that and he's been very patient. I also want to acknowledge the fact that he has done a good job of cleaning it up because I met with him when he first bought the property. And he has done a really good job of cleaning that up. And he has also done a really good job of working with us. We walked him through the process because we've abandoned, we, we walked him through a, a abandoned, is the road that went through there as well as our own, which council approved that. We've also walked him through the process of getting the industrial because half of his flood plat was industrial and half was residential. So we walked through to make sure that he could consolidate that. We also walked him through how to, how to get all of the ducks in a row. And so a lot of the enforcement activity was not pursued by me while we helped to make this happen. And so one, but I also set the record straight that, you know, once we did get this stuff done for him, that there was certain guidelines he had to abide by, which includes six foot, depending on what part of the code you read, there is a conflict that I, a couple of conflicts that I think need resolved. And he's right. One is one part of the code copies the state statute, which states that all you need is a six foot enclosure regardless of the, regardless of the material. The other one, in the zoning part of it, requires a six foot fence with an opaque barrier. And so there's, we need to correct that on ourselves. We also need to, we also need to correct another, another point of contention that I, I actually agree with Joe on is I think it's a little excessive, the fifty foot requirement. And I actually would concede with him that I would be willing to make an agreement with him, but to completely abandon something, these laws have been on the books since 2006 and I'm not targeting anybody. I am simply enforcing the law. We learned about it when he approached us with what he wanted to do. I have tried everything I can to help him achieve what his goals are. But I also can't justify to you, the board I work for, to go against what is written. So that's why we're here today, to find you. I'm asking your guidance to help me, help him. So we can come meet and compete in the middle. I am not here to target anybody, but the state statute is pretty clear and how it directs either if you want me to have the enforcement authority through Delvin or we want to do an ordinance and wipe the slate clean. Either way, it is on the books and I can't justify, I, I can't, I can't feel right with myself. I have to uphold what's written down.
You're doing your job.
Yes. So what I'm asking of you tonight is which route do you want me to go? Because I, I have simply done the best I can to guide Joe and give him the guidance that we need, you know, based on what the law says. And that's really what we're at. So the tip, I, I think he's right. I think we can agree.
Yeah.
I also don't want to charge him again for a variance. So if we have to get a variance, it's fine. I actually agree with him that we don't charge him. There's a lot of things, flexibility that I have at my level that I do want to agree to.
Yeah, I do my little lot and it looks the best it has in forty.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I have never felt like he has not done his job and helped him clean out. So I want to make that clear to you, Joe, that I have, I want to congratulate you publicly. You know, because I have, I saw the lot that you inherited and I see where it's at now. And I'm, I'm, I'm well done. Because I saw where you started.
So Joe's the only hang up right now.
All right, now, let's, let's, before we start, Joe, you want to come up and address us? Yeah. Tell us your side of it and then we've had a good narrative from, from Dustin. And you may have some details that we don't know about.
Hey, my name is Joe Rinker. I'm a city resident. I own and operate Randy's Body Shop and Towing. I purchased this business from my father in 2014. I have operated the forty-three-year-old business for ten years this time. Due to Cliff's body shop and towing retiring and shutting down his doors, this has caused an increase of business for me and the body shop and the towing site as well. I was looking for property that was already zoned industrial to expand my storage lot. Last year, the shoe property in 1001 Ninth Street came up for sale. With my lot full of unclaimed property, I needed a place to store them to make room for impound and other currency tow cars. The property was already zoned I two and the north half was residential. After speaking with Car, Carland, or the county tax appraiser, he suggested that we have the city vacate the street from metal and alley on the south side and place one parcel of the entire property. I reached out to the city and had this done to vacate and issue a new parcel. Dustin and Delvin said that I needed to fill out variances and conditional use for the property to become a junkyard. I told them that I was not a junkyard nor did I want to become one. I complied with them. Last month, I received a junkyard license that cost a hundred dollars and if I'm compliant under the C fifty already back. I asked around the local businesses and confronted Delvin and found out that I was the only one receiving. Delvin said it was because I was the only one compliant with the state. The license also states the fence has to be fifty feet off the property. The shop at fourteen oh seven Evans, the lot is only a hundred twenty-five feet wide, which only leaves me a twenty-five foot run in the middle. That is hot enough to remain to operate considering I have a towing contract with the state, county, and city. My property is also an impound lot for the city, county, and state. In nineteen eighty-six, Randy started towing. He was approached by the state bureau right away and was told to be compliant with the state for a tow lot that he needed a fence and a salvage storage certificate of compliance. That has been maintained to date. I disagree that I fall into the junkyard term. Nowhere in my nature does it say salvage or junk. I do not own a scale to weigh scrap copper, brass, furious or non-furious metals for buying and selling. I also do not buy wrecked junk or dismantled vehicles. The vehicles in my lot are there because they were towed in by the request of the state or county and some from the city. Most of them, most are abandoned vehicles that were left on the state and county roads. There were tow bills against them that have not been paid for. I have, I also have wrecked vehicles due to the fact that owners don't carry full coverage insurance on them and they are often not paid. Since I am not the owner of these vehicles, I legally cannot destroy them for a period of time. I cannot get a crusher in to clean my lot and satisfy the needs unless I have a certain number of cars. I am not a junk dealer. If I was a junk dealer, I would have a salvage license through the state, which I do not. I do not buy, sell, salvage, store, or deal in junk. I do not maintain or operate an automobile graveyard. The individuals that crush my cars own a junkyard. I operate an auto body repair facility and a tow lot. And I'm always going to have more than ten cars on my property. That is my business I'm in. Dustin and Delvin are going after other repair facilities in the city. They do not understand that when you're in business working on cars, you're going to have parts and cars lying around. Some cars are customers that didn't pay their bill or the repair was higher than the value of the car. They also need to remind general businesses or contribute a high amount of tax revenue to the city. If prospect stores or any other storage units were to place a fence around their property and offer outside storage for both RVs and cars, would they be classified as a junkyard? I ask council to not allow this to continue anymore. The ordinance is correctly written for a junkyard, not an auto repair business, auto body repair, nor a tow lot that is already compliant with the state. Thank you.
Joe, you want to stay here while they, they answer, they ask you questions or you want to?
Do any of the three businesses want to talk?
We didn't put them on the agenda, so it'll just be you for right now.
Okay.
Did, did you want to stand up here while they ask you questions or you want? Okay, somebody have any questions for Joe?
Didn't you have any ordinance? See, that's the thing. He's not a junkyard. Now, calling him the junkyard because this is what was on the book in the sixth. And I agree with him. There's, you had an ordinance for Lantin Pansys that was for exactly what he's doing. These towing cars in, they sit there till they either get paid or they, you get the title or however that works. And then he has to get through them.
So anyway, it could be classified. That's correct if I'm wrong, Dustin. We could make that an impound lot and not establish a charge, correct? And we don't do like a five or ten, but a setback on the fence?
No, I mean, it's a body shop. I'm already grandfathered in.
Okay.
But the thing they are on the. The thing that also being reminded that in my facility, I have a tow lot, I have an auto repair facility, and I also have a restoration business operating out of that gated area. And there's three businesses in that little area. So I mean, with that being said, I mean, the number of cars is always been worth it.
But if it's an outside, it's an impound lot, you could have it completely full with cars, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if I didn't have the restoration side, I would have room to stick more cars in there, but that's just not how it's working now.
Okay.
Well, I think it's just the sounds of things that, what's that? Did you, you want to introduce the interject?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So the nineteen, the Council's Junk Yard and Salvage Control Act is what I'm basing it on. And I will start off with definitions. I didn't make this up. So I guess the question is, I'll need Melissa's guidance because the way I interpret this is, since the term junk shall mean old or scrap copper, brass, rope racks, batteries, paper, trash, robber debris, wasted or junk, dismantled or wrecked automobiles or parts thereof, iron, steel, and others, old or scrap, various or non-farious material. It does not specify time period. Letter B, automobile graveyard shall mean any establishment which is maintained, used, or operated. Restoring, keeping, buying, or selling ten or more wrecked, scrapped, ruined, dismantled, or inoperated motor vehicles. Such terms shall not include any location where motor vehicle bodies are placed along stream banks for purposes of bank stabilization or soil, soil erosion control if such placement conforms with guidelines established by the chief engineer of the Division of Water and Resources of the Kansas Department of Agriculture. C, junkyard, shall mean any establishment which is maintained, operated, or used for storing, keeping, buying, or selling junk for the maintenance or operation of an automobile graveyard. And the term shall be garbage dumps. I guess, Melissa, my question is, I don't see a time period there. And this is in, this is in the, this is the statute. Can you give me guidance? Am I misinterpreting? So if it is, I will change my tune, but I'm just, I'm just basing it off of how I interpret this.
So I haven't read the, I mean, I have, but I don't have the definitions in front of me. So for the Kansas statute, but I will tell you that the way the Ellsworth ordinances are written, it does not specify storage or vehicle storage or automobile storage or whatever you want to call it. It does not separate that out from a junkyard. And I think that the Ellsworth ordinances pretty much mirror that statute. Now, I think that you could, if you so choose, for our purposes, separate it out. I mean, he's still going to be subject to the Kansas statute, but again, we don't enforce Kansas laws. I mean, we do, but. We don't enforce Kansas laws. I mean, we do, but. Not as a code violation. So if what you guys are talking about or what you're wanting to do or what the issue it kind of sounds like is. You need to look at what is classified as junkyard under the Ellsworth code and consider. Changing that, but I do think it matches the Kansas statute right now. I'm not going to swear to that, but I have looked at them. And they seem similar.
Like when you look at the definitions in five dot twenty dot zero two zero. It says junk means old. They've been, we basically copied and pasted what was in the statute.
See, that's what I'm, I think we need to break it out and split it to what he's doing.
Junkyards may like VFR metals, all metal, salvage. I mean, all them, they're the ones that buy and sell and they do have wrecked cars.
So, so Justin, let me ask you this. What? What are we, what, we got the ordinance, but what are we trying to get to from a look standpoint? What? What do you think the committee really wants there?
Well, that's your, that's this board's job to tell me because, uh, that's from the administration level. You know, you're gonna, uh, it depends on what you want. Now, at one end, they provide a lot of tax burden. I have no debate about that. But on the other, the location of where it's at is also important. We've got competing, we've got competing rules here. The school district, for example, Dina again reminded me today at a meeting how we very much need housing. So, you know, people are going to look at these places and if they're not shielded. You know, they're, that's going to be, that's going to, uh.
Now, I don't, you're not talking about not having a fence, correct?
Right.
No. So you want it to be shielded, correct?
Right. Yes. Everybody sounds like, Aaron, you, you think the shielding is fair?
Yeah, I, I think ultimately we're going to get to your ultimate goal here of getting what you want. I think. To a degree with where you're located outside of town. I think an ordinance almost. Ways for it is to protect more of like what's more centralized than town. But when you're being outside of town, I kind of look at it differently.
And I got county on one side and I got I two on the south. I got I two on the.
Right.
And then I've got residential that has vacant houses all along the north side. So then it's not been, nobody's going to be building that.
Right. Oh, and, and obviously the planning commission and everybody agrees with you having it there. So I'm not here to fight you, Joe. I want a clarification on what is in the law. I think we're getting to where we're going to go with this. I think Darcy, what, what are your thoughts and Jessica?
Well, I mean, I guess. When we, when we all started this, we agreed there's a fence. I don't have a problem with the setback if we have to change the setback, the variance. I don't have a problem with that. I do think it, I mean, if he's agreeing to fence. I do agree. I think it needs to be fenced in. I'm sorry, that's just. I, I, it's on the edge of town. I understand that, but there are still residents that live there. And we have one that's already been complaining about. Even though he's cleaned it up, it looks great. I just arrived the other day. We have one resident that's already been complaining about before all this about what it looked like. Um. I, so I think a fence eventually has to be put up. That's just my opinion on it.
All right, Jessica, what are your thoughts?
I'm going to mirror what Darcy said. I feel like a fence is, um, the, the way to go.
All right. So it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, everybody's, you know, likes the thought of a fence with, uh, do we? Yeah. Right, right. That's what I'm getting to. Hold on, so wait, hold on, let, let me finish. So it sounds like when we get our new attorney. And I'll let you off the hook here, Melissa. I think this is going to take some time. We need another ordinance to kind of define better what Joe's doing. So we can attract other people like Joe and they know right off the, I'm not saying something's going to happen here, but. You're, you're being treated fairly and someone else is like, hey, I want a piece of that. That's fine. Then they know we're going in. This is what I need to do. And it's, it's different. It sounds like we're headed somewhere that's divided out like Aaron said, or, or Don. Divided out. It's not a junkyard, but it's something different that includes a fence, an impound lot or whatever. And that'll be the job of the new attorney. Cause I think, Melissa, that's just going to take some time, isn't it?
Heck yeah, I'm totally on board with that being someone else's job. No, I mean, I think, yeah, it's, it's going to take a little bit of time or some looking at what other people are doing because you're going to have to. I mean, you want to make sure, like, uh, Dustin is referencing the timeframe and I don't know if that's necessarily the point, but there has to be some way to. Differentiate what Joe is doing from someone who's just bringing in wrecked cars. Or not even wrecked cars, but cars that are never going to run again and they're just going to stack them all up. Um, and so it gets a little bit complicated when you get into the legalese of trying to explain that in a way. That the city can then enforce moving forward, but it, it is doable, I think.
All right. I, I think it's doable. I think what you.
Can I ask that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
And that was, I just, I'm gonna, that was my next thing after Melissa just said that is. I understand Joe's not a junkyard and he's not an, you know, I mean, I understand. But there's got to be a way so we can enforce. I mean, give him, we're not penalizing him, but we're also not giving someone else. An okay to, for example, I will give you this. In Wilson, there's a guy that lives at the end of Main Street. Who uses his yard as a lots of cars sitting in his yard. So. I, we've got to differentiate that. We gave it to Joe for the purpose of what he's doing, but it's not okay for someone. In a, that owns a residential home to pile ten cars around their house. Just.
Right. Right. And then honestly, Darcy, that is the same part of this. Is this is the second part is do we go after eventually? This is not a joke. Uh, we, we, we might want to look at, you know, if residents are using it as that, then we really have. So I think what we need to do is have a fresh legal look at the whole thing where Joe's treated fairly. Everybody's happy. There's a fence. And we, we kind of split this out a little bit more. It sounds like where we're going. Go ahead, Dustin.
I would like to make sure that it's, uh, whatever we apply to, Joe has to be applied to everybody.
Oh, absolutely.
So if we're going to require him to build a fence, we're going to lower the setbacks and I need to.
I want to make sure that.
Had a, a, a good look to, at this, Joe, because I know it probably seems like it's a pain in the rear for you right now. But in all honesty, Dustin's doing exactly what we hired him to do. He's finding a lot of flaws in all our ordinances. Okay. And it's given us the opportunity to update him for the better of the future. So, I mean, ultimately that is. What Dustin's doing. So it gives us a chance to correct these issues. So even though it's a pain for you in this moment, so.
Do we, do we need a motion for him to go continue as he has been doing until the new ordinance has been resolved? But that way he's not in any violation right now at this time.
I haven't, I haven't done anything to.
Okay.
I, I just.
So he's legal and working with us. So now, if he's legal right now, like. Right. Is he okay, Delvin, to have the cars back in the trees or?
Yeah, though you guys need to decide on the variance. If you're going to waive, have them do a variance and then waive the fee, that's the part we need to decide next.
Yeah, but what about like other businesses like Martin's, Grab Cars, Voice Brothers? I mean, that's their business. I mean, you can't classify. Every business is a junkyard, I guess, is the other thing. That's what I.
Well, that's why we're, we're having this discussion. I'm not here to target anyone, Joe. I'm, I, I'm being honest when I say, I'm just trying to apply the law.
Right. You were kind of like the first woman.
Yeah.
But I'm the first one now either, so.
No, but that's the first one I've had that on our. You're their leader. Coming to you forever. So come anywhere. It sounds to me like we were all on the same page. I mean. Um, what we'll do, I think we need a fresh legal look. You know, you, you can, if, if you feel like, you know, you want to do something with Delvin as part of the variance, you can do that. We'll have the new attorney, uh, once we hire the new attorney, dive right into this and split it out better. Get back to Joe and say, all right, here's what we're going to do and get back to all the, the different impound junkyard lots. Or, or, you know, and, and I can say it. I mean, we've got to look at the residential too. I think what Darcy's saying is true. We have some homes that are, it, it, it meets that definition, even though it's not zoned industrial. Those residences are acting like a junkyard, you know, and, and are they pulling parts up? I don't know what they're doing, but we've got to look at that. But that's down the road. I think right now. You know, we get the new attorney and we really hammer it all on. Are you happy with that, Dustin?
Um, I'm willing, I will go with whatever the board wants. Uh, my main thing is I want to make sure that, uh, he, I want. I do, I, I do want to honor his request. I recommend that we waive the variance fee. And, um, I also want to get him the variance. And I'm also requesting a ruling on the variance because I think we all agree that the fifty-foot setback.
What's the very, what's the very, the fifty-foot as long as junkyard? What is the, what is the fence setback on an industrial?
That we need an attorney. Yeah. He's right. He's coming back to that. We need to get the attorney to hash this out. Because we can't do it tonight because it's like he says, it's based on a junkyard. We're not going to use that definition. So.
That's true.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah, you're all right?
Yep.
Okay, when I read.
Can he haul more car, if he gets more cars, can he haul more up there as it sits now to?
Well, and Joe, I will not do any, I would not have done that to you. Uh, we, I don't know, there's any, I'm not taking any action.
That's what I'm asking. He's asking.
Yep, yep, yep.
I mean, this may taste.
Well, I'm trying to say, sorry about that. I'm trying to.
We heard racks on the snow, two of them, one today and two the other day.
Yeah.
I mean, it just fills up so fast.
Yeah. So it sounds like no action right now until we get the attorney to look at it and go from there. Jessica and Darcy, you do that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, Joe, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, go ahead, Delvin.
Okay, that since we're waiving all that. A junkyard out there is body inspected once a year, you know, license, are we?
We got to figure all that out. It sounds like, yeah. Yeah, that's going to be, I'd say that's going to be part of either one of them. I mean, I'm just saying, we haven't talked about that, but.
Yeah.
That's a nice feature and I think that has to stand. Yeah.
This is a new year, I'm actually going.
Yeah, you're doing your job. You're, yeah, you really are. All right. That said, we're done with the new business portion. Delvin, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Okay. Uh, Chief, do you have anything?
Not per se. Um, I did speak with Troy with the street department. Um, earlier and around five thirty, we issued a. Parking emergency simply about a snow route between five thirty today and noon tomorrow. We're asking all vehicles to be removed off of snow routes so that the city can come in and start moving the snow and stuff like that. Just note that I, I just asked that if, if a citizen is asked by a. Street department or city, wherever, police or street, please be respectful. Please move the vehicle. If you don't, it could, if you do so, it could result in you going to be towed. Bad little bit, so, but now, and right now.
Have a good joke, Paul.
It's, it's set to expire at noon tomorrow. We can play that out. We, we generally haven't had any issues. Usually have pretty good compliance. If you wanted your cars to move, we, we, as long as we can get through there, fine. So, but we need to issue that just with the. You know, this weather.
Okay.
Um, I've got the lax, lax of days for the last couple of times. I've been busy forgetting. So my intent is, uh, next meeting, I have you guys my yearly. Record for as far as calls for sure and stuff like that. So the monthly, so that the bi-weekly is not occasionally, so. Didn't forget. I did not know what this got about. Unless you guys have anything to me, that's all I have.
Sounds good. Anybody have anything, Chief? All right. Thank you, Chief. All right, Mr. David. Nothing? All the work you're doing? No? All right. Uh, anybody else here in the department heading wise? No. Okay. Uh, city attorney, Melissa, do you have anything?
I do not.
How many days until you move?
I have no idea. Not enough for me to get everything done.
You don't go through a countdown. At least don't let us know. Um, city clerk. Nothing. Okay. Uh, Dustin, city administrator.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve as always.
Okay, that it?
I got one name with that. I'll, I'll report to you if I need.
Okay. All right. Very good. Anything else? Okay. All right. City council, Darcy, do you have anything?
No.
Jessica? Excuse me, council president?
I know Wayne is off, but since this is being recorded, I just wanted to give an extra shout out to Wayne. I know he helped me a ton when I was running for council, like just to know what things were. Specifically the Tiff district, which I still don't completely understand, but. Um, I think he's done a great job for the city and as well as just me personally being on council. So hopefully he'll watch this and. Just know how appreciated I, I am for him. And otherwise, that's it. And thank you guys for making me president. That's. It's a big deal.
You got a big stack of papers. That's why none of us want them.
I'll see you on Wednesday.
Oh, yeah. Yes, very good. Thank you. Thank you, council president. Um, title, do you have anything?
I don't.
You know? All right. Um, councillor Panzer.
Yes, I know. A couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank all the constituents that voted for me so I have this position. And I will try to do my best. And then I have three little questions that people have asked me and I couldn't answer. Uh, we have some pipe laying up at the lagoons. Are those just extra pipe and they be picked up?
Lagoons? Are you talking about the lagoons at Chris Park?
Greasy park.
All right. Sorry. Lagoons, I think. The waste water facility.
Um, the original plan for that was to use it as, as a tile drainage system to help drain it out if. We wanted to plant grass, but with the beam, when Bima happened, I kind of put that.
Okay, because the pipes just laying out there.
Yeah, we can go pick those up.
Yeah.
And then, um, I was asked about, and I know the answer to this, but I have to bring it up since I was asked.
Yep.
The potholes in front of Pizza Hut, Nam Pride, Garden Hotel coming through that Franny's Road.
Okay.
We really can't do anything with that this time of year, can we?
Oh, uh, I'm not the one to ask, Melissa, Troy about it. But where, where are they at again? By the.
You turn off one fifty-six in front of the ban ground.
Okay. All right.
And then down the other end where you turn into Casey's and, uh.
Oh, the primary road.
On each road.
Where the trucks are at. Okay.
I mean, the potholes are, oh, they're six inches deep. Yeah. And I don't know, in the winter time, if any can be done or not. So, but I told them I would bring it up.
All right.
And then the other question I have, maybe this is for Dave. I had a gentleman say he almost drove into the barricades the other night. When it was, weather was raining or snowing and I got thinking. Are we supposed to have that Asian sort of a blinking light on the barricades?
Um, I'm working on that.
Okay.
We're actually, uh, a couple of staff members said they'd like to build their own, so I'm going to give them a shot and.
Oh, okay.
And then they will include lights on.
Okay.
But yes, I would like lights.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Um, councillor Johnson, your turn.
Uh, I would just like to thank Wayne for his years of service and welcome down aboard.
Thank you. That's all I have. Good. All right. Mayor's comments. Um.
Not too many tonight. One, once again, very important meeting. Thank you for coming out in the snow. Um, it wasn't easy. I had to drive from Salina. I mean, I'm not lying. It was, it was. On the Salina side of that hill is perfectly fine. Once you get up the hill, it's pretty rough. So, uh, made it here and, um, really happy to be here. Um, Chris Park, we'll get on it and, uh, the next meeting we'll start to talk about it and, um. Gave Dustin some directives at the end of November of some things he could be working on. And, you know, it's a tough time period. You don't want to stop forward motion on the park. At the same time. There was an election and you want to be respectful of Wayne and, uh, so now Don can officially look at whatever he wants to look at. Uh, talk to, you know, Dustin and, you know, that changes a little bit of the culture of the council. So. You want to be respectful of an election and those changes too. So felt like we struck a nice little balance. Um, some people were wondering about the advisory. Committee. I thought they were very successful. I think they produced a successful result. I, I doubt that is the, you know, the, the route will go down, which is fine. It wasn't really designed to come up with the final idea. I think the. Um, you know, one of the directives that I was asked or I wanted to do was to make sure Dustin sent out a, a thank you or some kind of. Um, whether it's a plaque or what, you know, for their service to that committee. Um, you know, I'm not sure whether he's done that, but he can, he's got plenty of time to do that. So we can talk about all these issues in two weeks. So. Um, yeah, they were very successful. And I think the, the message they sent was they just wanted to look nice. It's that simple. They don't want a fifty million dollar Ferris wheel and donkeys, you know, all over the place and all that. They just want it to look nice. So. Um, we'll take it from here. You know, we're, we're elected officials. We have the power to, uh, pay for things. And so we'll come up with the idea. Uh, guaranteed, not everybody's going to be happy with it. We want as many people happy with it as possible. But we also want to strike a balance for being decisive. We don't want to keep dilly-dallying and thinking about this, thinking about that, doing that. We've, we've done this for a year. It's time to. You know, make a decision to go with it. And I think we all have positions that we, we hold sacred. We're going to try to honor all those positions and they're all invaluable. They're intelligent positions, Dustin. You know, his is, you know, I can tell you right now, it's flooding and it's, and that is important. Mine is. I like an idea where ten years from now, the town could go, you know, I'm kind of tired of this. I'm going to do something else. So. I like that flexibility. That's, that's probably something I'll dig my heels into. And everybody's got their. You know, their, their thing and we're going to try to reach an agreement. We're going to move forward with it. And I think the advantage we have. This was so smart is, is look at it over a growing season and you'd be surprised at how many people were pretty much okay with it. They're tired of dealing with it. There are a lot of people. They're very quiet. They're like, hey, quit dealing with it. You know, we're done. That's, it's a draining place. And so. We have to honor their views and their, their opinions too. So that's, uh, you know, something to keep in mind. But we'll, we'll start working on it in two weeks. And, um, you know, we don't want to obsess over it and all that. But, you know, th- those are some of the reasons why. Maybe you haven't heard about it in the last five or six weeks, but I think we struck a balance. You know, we want to be respectful of both Wayne and, and Don. Um, so with that said, um. I think tonight's a big football game, right? And I'm going to make the prediction that the Michigan Wolverines will win. I think that they're going to be the national champions in about two hours. I could be wrong. I don't know what the score is right now, but, um, they seem pretty hungry to me. Not that Washington is a bad team.
Not that Washington is a bad team or anything like that. So, uh, we don't need an executive session. Um, do you want to wish everybody a happy twenty twenty-four? And, uh, we're gonna attack a lot of different things and it's gonna be intense. I mean, it'll definitely, uh, be the most intense years that I've been here, uh, we're gonna get after it. So I'm excited to have Don, I appreciate, uh, him and the fact that he is willing to come back after years. Uh, that's kind of unique, we get, we get that insight. So, um, and I certainly appreciate Wayne and, and one thing I will tell the council, I think, I think Jessica, Darcy, Aaron, and Tyler will agree, um, you know, Wayne was kind of the Travis Kelsey guy. You need a first down, we didn't study, weren't quite as prepared as we needed to be, he was prepared. So we've kind of got to pick up the slack a little bit, whereas he was outstanding in doing his research and being prepared and all that. And I'm not, and I'm saying that, I know for a fact I was at every meeting, uh, but without him now, and I'm sure Don will, will play that role too, uh, we've got to kind of pick up a little bit of the slack in that area and I think, I think we will. So with that said, let's go ahead and, uh, have a motion to adjourn and we'll move on.
So Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Give you a second then.
All right, councillor Johnson has made a motion to adjourn, councillor, excuse me, council president Coats has seconded that motion. Hearing all the papers, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.